Good evening, it is now 6:30 and I will call to order the Monday, March 14th, 2016 Burnsville Planning Commission. Good evening Commissioners, thank you for your time this evening. Staff, thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's time. Our first item this evening is the adoption of the posted agenda. Commissioners, do you have any changes to the agenda? None from Commissioners, staff?
None.
Hearing none, I would stand for a motion.
So who?
Moved by Commissioner Levy, seconded, I think, by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay and the motion carries. The second item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes from February 22nd, 2016 meeting. Commissioners, have you reviewed the minutes and do you have any changes? None from Commissioners, staff? Any changes to the minutes?
None.
None. With that, I would also stand for a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Singh, seconded by Commissioner Levy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay and that motion carries. The third item on this evening's agenda is a public hearing. It's an application of the City of Burnsville to amend Title 10 zoning, Chapter 12, R-I-1, family residential, Section 4, conditional uses of the Burnsville City Code to remove high-density uses from the list of conditional uses in the R-1, single-family residential zoning district. And since Ms. Garros is the only one here this evening from staff, she will be presenting. Thank you, Ms. Garros. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Planning Commissioners. The application that's before you will be, is a public hearing and this is something that the city attorney has discussed with staff and in looking at the zoning ordinance, which I think the Commissioners are well aware of, when we look at our single-family zoning district, the requirements are really set up for single-family homes. The setbacks, the types of materials that can be used, the number of buildings on a site, those types of things, they're set up for single-family uses. I believe one of the work plan items that we have yet later this year is related to other kinds of uses that don't really conform to those standards because there are things like churches and schools and much larger buildings and structures. So we've got that on for a future work plan to take a look at the types of performance standards and things that we may want to look at incorporating into the ordinance. In addition to that, under the single-family zoning district, in the list of conditional uses, there are a number of items that are, some of them are very just outdated terms and also they are uses that have a lot of people associated with them. In our standard, single-family zoning district, we allow a density of 3.5 units per acre. In these situations, you've got hospitals, sanatoriums, rest homes, nursing homes, those types of facilities which are, again, very large facilities and have many more people in them than that single-family zoning standard has. So the request is to take a look at those specific uses in the, under the conditional uses in that R-1 zone and to request that those be deleted from the list of conditional uses. Those uses are allowed elsewhere in the city, in different zoning districts. The majority of the nursing home or senior assisted living projects that the Planning Commission has seen over the years are actually in business zoning districts, R-B-1, B-2, B-3 zoning district. And then we also have a number of different facilities that are by the Fairview ridges within that campus. That is now a mixed zoning district. So these particular uses, we currently don't have any of these high-density uses existing in any of our single-family zones and the request is to consider removing those from the R-1 zone so that we have uses that are more consistent with that single-family district. This is a situation too where in terms of some previous things that we may have discussed relate to, for instance, vacation rentals. If you have someone looking to do a vacation rental, which we did just change our ordinance to not allow those, but one of the arguments could be, well, you allow higher density and different kinds of uses in your R-1 zone already because these land uses are in here. So the city attorney feels that by removing those, number one, we get back to uses that are more applicable in our single-family districts and the density of those uses will be much more in line with single-family as opposed to these other high-density uses. So the request is to modify the ordinance to remove those uses from the R-1 zoning district.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Garros? Commissioner Workman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Garros, how does this apply to maybe like a battered women's shelter or a treatment center that might be located in a home or in a residential area? Is that applicable here?
Certainly. All of the state licensed, there are state licensed group homes and different types of homes such as what you had mentioned that are allowed by state statute and local cities cannot zone them out. So they're permitted because they are allowed by the state. So those really would not have any impact or be impacted by this, this ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Commissioner Singh, you?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Garros, does that include home daycares?
Home daycares, daycares for a certain number of children, again, they're licensed.
Right state.
Yep, yep, so those are permitted. If you get to, I don't know offhand what the number is, but when they get to be a larger type facility, then they need to be in a commercial zoning district, but there are lots and lots of daycares for, for fewer kids that are allowed, again, because they're licensed through the state.
Thank you.
Ms. Garros, to tap onto those two questions, but a daycare or a shelter of some sort, would that truly meet the density piece that we're talking about? Are we talking, because as I read this, I was, you know, high-density uses in a residential area, so would a, a group home or something fit into a high-density versus as what we would call like a nursing home or a large care center from a density standpoint? Can you maybe clear that up for me in my mind?
We have got that. In terms of the uses, for example, nursing homes, rest homes, retirement homes, those types of uses still will remain permitted uses in the medium and high-density residential zoning districts. Nursing homes, intermediate care facilities, long-term care facilities and residential healthcare facilities, those will remain conditional uses in the business zoning districts. And then we have the hospitals which really, we only have one that's in the mixed district, so that will remain in that district. So there are other zones and that's kind of what I think the, the city attorney is getting at is that you look at these types of uses and they are allowed in other districts and when you deal with the multifamily and the commercial and the industrial zoning districts for different things, they're set up to deal with large buildings, multiple occupants, you know, they've got, there are standards in those districts for parking areas, for screening, for trash handling and all of those types of things that you don't find in the single-family district because it's just not applicable in general to single-family homes.
Commissioner Levy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So at this time, there are no facilities impacted by this change.
Correct.
We're just looking at making sure we clarify anything in the future.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? This is a public hearing, so at this point I would like to open the public hearing and ask anybody in the audience that would like to come up and speak to this item to step up to the podium and give us your name and, and address for the record. Thanks for coming. If you'll step up right there.
Here?
Yep, and if you'll give us your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Merle Meyer, I live at 3113 Loop Road South in Burnsville.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer, I appreciate you coming this evening.
Couple of questions. In the Orchard Gardens area where Loop Road is at, is, is actually R-1A and not R-1. A question that I would have is how would, how would this change affect that area? The second question I would have is, here we're talking about conditional use, there's also 10-12-4A, which is an interim use permitting process. Curious how it would affect that since it's a subcategory of this. And one other comment that I would have, Commissioner Levy asked if this would impact anybody who's currently in place and that's why I'm asking about the R-1A. There's a, there's a business, Haven Acres, that's on Loop Road, that was given an interim use permit to run a business with horses that, that deals with special needs people. And a number of the reasons for changing this ordinance that have been mentioned to us has to do with traffic, has to do with parking, has to do with dealing with, with wastes from operations. And that business, even though it's been given conditional use or interim use, one of the questions that we would have was, would this actually impact the renewal of their interim use, which is coming up next year at some point? Because for, for us back in, in the Loop Road area, it's actually impacted us quite a bit. When you live back there on days when they're, they're having events, you know, you can see up to 15 cars parked along the road, it can block the road. People who drive back there feel that, well, we're in a rural area, so I don't need to be overly concerned about how I park in the road because sometimes they're parked near the center of the road, which makes it more difficult to get by. And they'll stand in the road, you know, and talk for extended periods of time and it's not just one, it could be multiple people. And it, it causes us concern as we drive in and out because we only have one way in or, well, there's actually a number of ways in and out of Loop Road, but that's the main way in and out for all the residents back there. And so for us, it is a concern, just the, the traffic, you know, the number of people they have down there, we talk about infrastructure to support high-density type activities which, that becomes a high-density activity. There's been times when they've had hundreds of people there. And the only restroom facility is, is the home. And, you know, is the septic system back there scaled to deal with the traffic that they have, things of that nature. And so those would be the basic questions that we would have in regards to this ordinance change and, you know, the, the effects that it would have back on the homeowners back there. So those are comments or questions that we have.
Hang on, just, don't. Ms. Garros?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, Commissioners, Mr. Chair. The, this ordinance amendment would not have any impacts on that particular interim use permit that was granted. This is dealing with these specific uses that are the conditional use section. So what, what would occur though is that the way that Burnsville zoning ordinance is set up, uses that are allowed in the R-1 zone, be they the permitted conditional interim uses, they roll into the next district. So they apply, these same uses would apply to the R-1A zone as conditional uses, so they'd be removed as types of uses in the R-1A district and then also in the R-2 zoning district. Other than that, for the issues that the applicants are addressing for that, there are, the way to address those is at the time of the initial public hearing for the interim use permit and then should they come up for renewal. We have had a lot of inquiries and complaints and issues that staff has gone out to investigate for that particular use. If they were to come back and to make application to extend that interim use, that would be a, a public hearing that they would need to do and all of those issues and complaints they would need to deal with because those would be brought forth to Planning Commission and Council as, as issues. So in the consideration of whether something like that should continue, you would know of all of the complaints and issues that have arisen.
Does that make sense? Because we, we handle interim uses very specifically and I realize, this one, it's been a while since this was in front of us, but what you're explaining to us today wasn't, if I remember correctly, the intent.
No, no, I understand that, but then that was why one of my questions were, is this actually going to precipitate then down to 10-12-4A, which is an interim use permitting process?
And as Ms. Garros said, as, as we, it's not going to affect this use, but it, it does, when we put it in an R-1, it goes to R-1A. The, the real difference here, sir, is the difference between what, you know, the high-density that, as this described, and I understand what you're, what you're speaking of from a standpoint of the sheer number of people that may be attending an event. But I would, I would tell you that definitely if there are issues to continue to call the city or notify the city of incidences because all of that will come up. When we review an interim use, the, the history that goes along with that interim use gets, gets brought back up and a lot of times we as a, as a, as a volunteer board or the council will look at something and, and, you know, we looked at it a year ago and we've brought it back or two years ago and here's the history. And it can be as much as calls to the city hall, it can be police calls, it can be fire calls, it can be everything that is associated with that interim use does get reviewed. And then that interim use would, would, that application for an extension, if they do come to us, would go through this same process. It would be, it would be put in the paper. Typically on an interim use, there's going to be notification to the, the property owners around it and I forgive me, Ms. Garros, the actual number, the, the distance out will go out.
It's, the required notification is 350 feet from the outer boundary of the, of the site and then we are required to post in the local newspaper. It gets published twice and then we also have them post signs, a sign or signs at the site with the city's number on it so that you can call regarding that particular use.
And then I would encourage you to, if you go to the, to Burnsville.org, you can sign up and get a notification for our meetings. It's the same way we get them and you'll get an email probably on a Wednesday afternoon saying that the Planning Commission paperwork has been posted and you can, and we don't have any special passwords. You follow the same link we do and it would take you to, and you could look and then that would give you even further notice of when it's gonna, and to come to the public hearing here when we, when we review it.
Yeah, that's how we became aware of this.
Okay.
We are.
Well, thank you, we appreciate that.
Just, just clarification, so what I understood you said is that we're really talking about the conditional use permitting process today.
Yes, that's correct.
There's an interim use permitting process that really isn't being impacted today. So there's a possibility in the future, these items that would be struck from conditional use could then be considered under interim use.
In order to do that, we would have to republish, we'd have to go through the same process again because we need to let people know ahead of time what sections of the ordinance that we're talking about and because this is limited to the conditional uses, those are the only sections that, that we're dealing with. If there is an application to amend or to look at the interim uses, we would publish the same way. It would be published in the newspaper. Because for these types of general text amendments, there is not a specific property that's involved. We don't send out the notices within 350 feet because it's kind of a community-wide thing. But yeah, that would just be, it would be an ordinance amendment, it would be a public hearing before the Planning Commission and then go to City Council.
Are there plans to review the interim use portion under, under this section?
Not at this point.
Not at this point? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Does, I don't know, does our process, condition, let's say we have zoning districts where something can be, if, if something is a granted use, if it's a restaurant in a commercial district, typically that application would come through and not even come in front of this body. Something could be a conditional use in a zoning district, which means it's, we're going to, there's going to be a, a conditional use permit put in place and we're going to look at the entire application and, and what can be done. And that is somewhat different than the application that was brought in front of us for the property that you're speaking of that is just simply an interim use. Here is a use that has a much limited scope because the, the, the use that we're taking out of here today, once it was granted, would never come back to us unless there was something else that changed. Very distinct difference from a timeline on an interim use permit. And we do a lot of interim uses in the city, not a lot, most of them are in the Minnesota River Quadrant area so they can stack soils for something. But the, the, the definite piece that we need you to help us with is to be involved in as this application comes up that we can get your feedback on, on that particular one.
Sure, sure. The only, the only thing I would mention is, back, at least back where we're at, the notification of 350 feet proximate to the, the property, the density is so low back where we're at. A lot of, a lot of the residents that were impacted by that specific conditional use permit knew nothing about it until it was actually through the, the whole process.
Okay.
And, and so.
We can definitely take that on record.
As a caveat, maybe for back in the Orchard Gardens area, maybe expanding the notification just simply because of the density and the distances from, you know, whatever, you know, property it might be would be much more helpful because you'll get much more feedback from the people who would be impacted in that particular case.
And I'm sure staff can look at that. We do have a fair amount of unique zoning rules just for southwest Burnsville, just because of the size of the lots and the uniqueness of the, that is a very unique part of the city that is not duplicated anywhere else.
Mr. Chair, I think I, I understand too that if a homeowner or a landowner has some interest because of incidents that occurred, that you're talking about with this particular property, if you call the planning department and you list your name, that you will be interested to be notified, that you can be notified.
Okay.
Even though you don't meet a 350.
Actually, our city attorney has advised against that.
Against that?
The statute, yeah, the statute requirement, the city was actually sued for doing things like that that are different from the statute and we were held liable for that, so we follow the statute in that.
Definitely pay attention to the Planning Commission notes.
Yeah.
And.
We do.
Because we will see that well in advance.
As, as I mentioned, we do get the emails and we read them.
That is very helpful.
Well, thank you.
Sure.
We appreciate that.
Did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for coming in. Anyone else that would like to speak to this motion, to this topic, sorry?
I, I would.
Oh, yes, can you, can you give us your name and address for the record officially?
Yes, I'm Carol Meyer and I live at 3113, 3113 South Loop Road, too. And when we were talking about the, the communication thing and it's like, my husband who just spoke, he said that we, we got the, we got the email alerting us of your meeting, yes, but before that, I know somebody else had pointed out in the newspaper, the little clipping, and it was because they were specifically following every little newspaper to look for a little thing because they had felt very cheated before because we didn't see that little notice. And what I, why I'm bringing this up is because in this day and age, it seems like a small little newspaper notice is not a real sufficient way of notifying the public. We have, we have internet, we have emails and all that kind of thing and it seems like maybe if the city could work on, like you said, you couldn't say Orchard Gardens specifically, but how come it is in this day and age that we couldn't have notifications that say, hey, something is going on in your neighborhood, here's an alert? The, the police department does it, they say, hey, they send out alerts. In fact, with the city, the city at one time even said if we wanted to sign up for alerts to get our, when our septic systems should be cleaned, we could do that. So I guess whether it be our neighborhood or somebody else's neighborhood, it just seems like if you want to sign up just like we get Planning Commission meeting alerts, why couldn't we get alerts like that?
The reason is, is that for the zoning ordinance, the Minnesota statutes are clear. They say 350 feet and that's what the city follows. That's the requirement, it seems, and just thinking, yeah, sure, you could apply it to a neighborhood and send them this and that, but what if you didn't get everybody? What if I defined my neighborhood as, you know, the people around me versus, you know, some other neighborhood a few houses down? There's not a specific definition and that's why our city attorney has told us that we do need to follow the state law and that's why we do so.
Maybe if it was done as a backwards then where it was, if something was put out so people could tap into that and they could, they could go there on a daily basis and say, oh, is there something going on in my neighborhood? So then it would be the responsibility of the resident to tap into that. But you have to remember from, from a residence point of view, this is big, this is covers, when you look at all the different meetings and all the different things that take part, not only in the city but in the school district at all these different levels, it is really hard for us as residents to be able to take an active part without knowing what's going on. So I'm just, and I know that these things don't go quickly and that kind of thing, but I'm just suggesting that it is hard for neighbors to be notified and with this last incident that we have in our neighborhood, we weren't properly notified because the signage wasn't there. There were different things that didn't take place that should have, but it was skipped, it was omitted for whatever reason. And that's kind of water under the bridge at one time and I'm just saying to be proactive so these things don't happen to us or other people. Maybe there's a way that we could start looking at a little bit more of a, a system that would work for all of us.
I think that's exactly what Chair Bradrick was saying, that there is a sign up through the city website that you can sign up to receive notifications. So that's what the city is trying to accomplish is by having that into communications.
Yeah, but when you get, when you get from all the different departments and most of those things really don't affect most of us, you know, I mean, they may affect us in a bigger term, but it, it's kind of like, that's a lot of, you know, that's like five emails just from the city to look through to say, oh, does it affect my neighborhood kind of thing?
To further clarify, there are a couple of ways you can do that. I get what you're talking about, the emails from the city, but prior to being on the Planning Commission, you can specifically go and get just the notice of our meeting and it's one single email and it says that the Planning Commission agenda has been posted.
Yes.
And you click on it and you can, so there's actually, if you go to the website and, and manipulate your notification list, you can eliminate many of those other notifications and narrow it down to just the information about the Planning Commission.
Yes, I understand that. What I'm saying is, is that I have to look at the City Council meeting minutes, I have to look at, I have to look at your agenda, I have to look at the parks agenda, not to mention any other kind of things like maybe the schools or the whatever. I'm just saying that it's not just, I can just look at that and say, hey, is there anything here that affects me because 90% of it probably isn't going to. So I'm just saying that there should be some way in this day and age, there's got to be an app for that.
Sometimes, you know, government moves slow.
I understand that.
You know, you've, you're on record this evening, so definitely that'll be a, a public information and I'm sure that'll, it'll be discussed. We do have, you know, a fair amount of legal things we need to follow as a city from a notification, but I do appreciate your, your comments and in specifically, all the other commissions you mentioned would not probably be as, as, as important to your information as, as. important to your information as our information, unless they're putting a new park in your neighborhood, but those are all going to be certain things.
Or unless we missed it on your meetings.
Yeah, so, and then the progression would be is it always is going to come to us prior to going to the city council. So if you picked it up with us, you're kind of at the beginning of the, of the process.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to see if there's anyone else that would like to speak to this item. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioner Levy, you have a question?
Yes, I would like to commend the couple who just spoke for your attentiveness to the things that are going on in the city. All citizens should be as actively curious and involved as you seem to be. I thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any other questions? With that, I would, would there be anybody willing to make a motion? Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Get to the right page here. I apologize. Should put it up there, thank you, Deb. I would like to make a motion that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the ordinance.
I've got it right here.
Yeah, this, I'm reading this one. I'm sorry. I'll restate that, Mr. Chair, if you would be, bear with me for a second.
You're good, I've got...
All right, so I would like, like to make a motion that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the ordinance to remove high-density uses from the conditional uses section of the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District.
Second? Moved by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you. The fourth item on our agenda this evening is, is an application of Dakota Partnership for an extension of a conditional use permit and a variance for subway restaurant building and site improvements at 2900 Cliff Road East. Ms. Garros, you have the floor for this extension.
Thank you, commissioners. The application before you is an application for conditional use permit that was approved by the city March of 2015. The application was for a conditional use permit and then also a variance. And the proposal was to take the existing site, which is located at Cliff Road East and River Hills Drive, which is a B2 zoned property, and to improve that site with a new subway restaurant. If you recall, before it had closed, it was a liquor store. So to change it to a subway restaurant with a drive-through. So this is the application that was approved. In that year, the applicant has pulled a building permit and does have an active building permit for the site. What they have indicated to staff is that their construction group was pulled to a different site in the state, a different, different community, and that they did not have the opportunity to get back to this site as soon as they had hoped to do so. They still want to proceed with the plans and as I say, they do have that active building permit there. However, they will not be able to start getting the majority of the work until later this summer or early fall. The way that conditional use permits and variances are structured is that if there's not been substantial construction or work taken place before the 12 months are up, then the variance and the conditional use permit expire. With this, they have contacted staff. We identified for them that their expiration was coming up and asked them if they wanted to continue with the project or to let the applications expire. Their, their indication is that they would like to continue to do so. In the interim, I've been notified also that the building has been posted again for sale and what they have advised is that their lease actually runs out soon. And rather than continue to pay the lease over the next few months, when they know that they will not be able to get into the site to start construction until late summer, that it is listed for, for sale at this point. So if someone else were to come along, they would need to follow the ordinance and if it were something different than this approval, they would need to make application for the appropriate planned unit development, conditional use permit, et cetera. If they could come in and meet the ordinance in all respects, use the existing site and building as is, and did not need any deviations or approvals, then they would be able to proceed with the building permit at the site. This is relatively routine for the planning commission and council to consider extensions under these circumstances. And so the request from the applicant is to continue this for one more year and they feel that they will be under, under construction, as I said, late summer or early fall this year.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Commissioners, does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Levy?
I'm confused. You said that they want a one-year extension, but that their lease is up, are about to be up and they don't want to continue paying the lease. So somewhere there's a, I'm not, I'm not clear on what that is.
Commissioner Levy, they're, they're requesting this condition, we granted a year ago this conditional use permit and we're going to extend it. They, at this point, as an, as a separate, a separate point, may or may not continue the lease to be building, but this conditional use permit will expire. So step one is to make sure they can extend it and that is not tied to, they may or may not using, they may let this one expire.
I understand.
But that's going to be based on their, their personal business decision.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioners, I would stand for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I predict moved that the planning commission recommended the city council approval of the one-year extension to March 3, 2017 for the conditional use permit and variance to allow for the site and building improvements for a freestanding subway restaurant with all conditions of the CUP and variance will continue to remain in full force and effect.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Levy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Rocketing on to the fifth item on our agenda this evening is a discussion from our work plan, the planning commission. We have spent a little time on building perimeter landscape standards and this has been on our work plan for 2016 first quarter. We have specifically struggled as a commission, in some cases with variances where someone does not meet the 50% threshold. And what that is, is at least 50% of the building must have landscaping, sodded or landscaped with ground cover no less than six feet in width. And if you did read our background, that has changed, there's a fair amount of information in our background from the standpoint of four feet and six feet. And before we get going, I will, we, we've got some information from Commissioner Benke, who was unable to attend this evening, but did provide a fair amount of information for us, with all of you have gotten that information this afternoon via email and, and hard copy this evening, and Ms. Garros will cover. But to kind of summarize Commissioner Benke's comments, we have struggled in several applications with patios, where the patio naturally needs to be next to the building. And then that no longer fits into the perimeter of the building and Commissioner Benke supports some integration of the patio and the landscaping with it around to include that, that perimeter. There is some background information for you that I'm sure Ms. Garros is also going to cover from the standpoint of the number of times we have had to approve a variance for this. So I wanted to make sure I got Commissioner Benke's information out before, I forgot it. Ms. Garros, you have the floor.
Thank you. Commissioners, this is a work plan item, it's a discussion only, there is not a formal, formal public hearing or, or process associated with this. This was something that was on here work plan for last year and we were not able to get to it, so it's carried over to this year. What staff did in order to provide background for your discussion tonight is to just go back and research how the provision came into effect, how long it's been effective, what are the circumstances, what's the relationship to at least applications that have been considered over the past five years, to give just some perspective to the commission and your discussion. As Commissioner, or as Chair, excuse me, lose my voice. As Chair Bradrick had indicated, the specific standard we're looking at is for building perimeter landscaping. And the requirement is that 50% of the building perimeter needs to be green space and/or landscaping in a depth or planting bed of at least six feet. That standard, for the most part, that 50% requirement has been in place since about 1991. Prior to that, the ordinance didn't have a landscape section, rather there were different landscape standards depending on the type of use that you were dealing with and it was kind of scattered throughout. And from reading the background information from that time, they felt that it would be much more conducive for developers and property owners if there was one consolidated section of standards and if they took a look at them instead of different standards for each type of land use, to do it on a zoning district-wide basis. So we do have the, I believe it's section 30 or 30A of the zoning ordinance, which is all landscaping. For the most part, those same standards stayed in effect for many years. There was later a requirement, or some requirements that the city council took a look at in, in commercial and industrial zones where there's been taking by a new street project, whether it's a city project, a county project, a state project. They felt that it made some sense to allow for deviations for certain standards and landscaping is one of those. So they adopted an ordinance that basically for all of our commercial and industrial zones, if there is a land taking, there are standards set forth that says you don't need to meet the 50% standard or the 25% overall green space, you can have a reduction of X amount considering that your site is now smaller because it was taken for, land was taken for a public purpose or road project.
And commissioners, we had some of that with the 513
Yes.
Project.
Yes, exactly. Then in 2008, there were a couple of really extensive studies that were done. I'm not sure if Ram, if you were part of those? We took a look and we hired a consultant to take a look at our commercial and industrial building standards. And there was a moratorium that was put in place. This was like a nine to 12-month study that was done. It included working with the Business Community, Chamber of Commerce, the EDC, et cetera, to take a look at our standards and to make modifications to be more reflective of current development practices. Within that, some of those standards did include taking a look at some of the landscaping standards as well. Kind of on a concurrent timeframe, the planning commission was already taking a look at the landscape ordinance and wanted to incorporate more sustainable practices. This is about the time that the city was going through and adopting its first sustainable, sustainability plan. It made a lot of sense, we have a lot of high water usage. So we wanted to see, are there ways that we can encourage more native plantings, those types of things to decrease impacts to our water supply and whatnot? So we did a large study, this is a separate consultant, but they basically took a look at our entire landscape ordinance and pretty much rewrote the entire thing. The provisions related to the perimeter landscaping, building perimeter landscaping did stay the same. The only change was is that we increased the depth of the planting bed based on recommendations from our city forester and others in the landscape business indicating that four feet was a little narrow, especially when you have building overhangs for those plants to survive. So that's why that increased to the six feet, which we're dealing with now, went into place. So that provides a little bit of background on the ordinance itself, where we came from and where we're at today. We did have our staff take a look at the projects from the last five years, basically everything that's come through planning commission and council from 2011 through 2015. And we did find there are actually seven applications that you saw that had deviations. There are a lot more applications that had various deviations, but there were seven that had deviations particular to this perimeter landscape standard. And what we did for the email today is we sent some updated information from this list, which is the, basically all the PUD deviations, and this is the attachment that was sent along. And it just lists all of the applications, what all of the deviations were, and then we highlighted the ones that related to the perimeter landscape. And we have, there are actually, there are seven applications, but there would be eight buildings because there was a combined application that included both the Starbucks and the Chick-fil-A, two different buildings, but it was all under one application. The way that the, where the standards come into play for this, we did have, the city of Burnsville made an application for its ABLE site and that is down by Cliff and River Ridge. And that is a three-story plus building, cement building, and it's set there for basically firefighters and police to go and practice putting out fires and things.
So nothing would survive?
Correct. Nothing would survive. It wouldn't survive in the parking lot with the chemicals, whatnot. So they did receive deviations from, from that standard, again, basically because nothing would survive the use. Then we have, I think that all the commissioners or the majority of you would be familiar with the Nesko leasing project. That is something that is a temporary use. It was an interim use that was approved for a certain period of time and they were making an addition to an existing building, this is down in the Minnesota River Quadrant. And the addition was for a service building. So you have all of the south side of the building, it's all going to be service doors where they're going to be bringing in trucks in for service. The, they did have some landscaping available in the back of the building, but not on the sides. So for that, because it was a temporary use and at some point in time it will go away or is intended to go away, it will be brought into compliance at that point in time. But for the interim, they did receive, they did receive deviations for that. For the MM Burnsville Associates, this is the application that I was referring to where both Starbucks and Chick-fil-A replaced the old Champs building. The Champs building had a lot of landscaping around it, a lot of green space, for those of you that remember. In this case, for both of these, you have two separate buildings then that were built on the same site as the former Champs and they both also had drive-throughs. And with the landscaping on those, I think due to the type of business being more of a fast, fast food, you know, drive-in type of thing, there was not as much opportunity to do the perimeter landscaping. So they did get deviations on Starbucks for only 32% perimeter landscaping. And then for Chick-fil-A, they had 49% as opposed to the 50%. In the iMetro Edina application, that was just earlier this year, this is for the Town and Country Shopping Center. And in this case, you have a shopping center that dates from the early 1960s, well before any of these, most of the provisions that we deal with today were put into effect. And in this case, they were making modifications to the southernmost tenant space. They were not able to make it to the 50% linear building perimeter standard, but they did increase over what was existing. So that was considered a benefit to the project. So they ended up with 16% as opposed to before they had 15%. So it's a bettering of that situation. For Green Horizons, that was relatively recent. If you recall, this is Cliff and River Ridge and we had the application for a landscape company. The proposal was to construct two buildings, one initially in the first phase and then another in a future phase. This site was a very difficult site to develop, very narrow. And we knew when the city platted the property a number of years ago, that they would need some type of deviation for any type of use to go in there, just because it was such a shallow site. And they did receive, they received a 36% as opposed to 50% deviation for the building perimeter landscaping. And that would be on just the first building, the second building, we required the 50. But for the first building, if you recall, again, it was a very shallow site, a lot of top of topography. So, what they did is the building will have landscaping around it. It's just that they needed to put the sidewalk, abutting the building, and then the landscaping on the other side of it. So, you will have that. It's just not against the building. It's a few six, five or six feet away from the sidewalk. Costco Wholesale was just recently reviewed by planning commission and council, and they were granted a deviation to allow them to go from 50 to 38% building perimeter landscaping. And then Semstone Products, I believe is our last one. Yep. Semstone was the last one that was approved, and that was another case of an existing condition, and it was temporary. They were replacing a non-conforming trailer and putting a building in over the existing parking lot. So, they were granted a deviation as well, but this site will go away once the mining is completed at the Kramer Mining and Materials site. So, with that, that's kind of a background of where we've been, how the ordinance came to be, what's involved, and at least its application in the last five years. From the information that Commissioner Benke provided, we did hand out to the commissioners his email. And in his discussion, it's his feeling that there is perhaps a feeling out there or even something that would discourage restaurants from putting in patio, outdoor patios, due to this building perimeter landscape standard. Although we have not seen that specifically, it may have been part of, and I apologize, I did not work on the Chick-fil-A project and Starbucks. But in any event, we took a look at the ordinance, and for outdoor seating areas, we don't have a requirement for perimeter landscaping around those. We do have a requirement that those outdoor seating areas, you need to define the area, either with landscaping or with fencing or some other material to do that. But I think that from what Commissioner Benke had indicated is that because these outdoor patios are usually connected right to the building, a lot of times they have to be if they're serving alcohol and food and whatnot, that perhaps this standard at 50%, if we don't do something to address the patios, there could be a problem with that in the future. So, some of the things that could be considered for that is it would be possible that we could indicate in the ordinance that if you have, if you're putting in a patio, that landscaping around the patio could be credited for the building perimeter landscape. That may be an opportunity. There's some suggestions that Mr. Benke has, but there are opportunities to do those and address those, and we're here for discussion. So, really looking for input from the planning commissioners as to how you would like to see this proceed or what information you might need to be able to make that decision. I'll open up for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Excellent work on all the background information there. Commissioners, your pleasure.
I'll go first.
Commissioner Workman, you have the floor.
I just would start, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Deb, for the thorough presentation. I'm comfortable with the 50%. I agree with Commissioner Benke that we should maybe look at giving some leeway to patio space because I think that is something that we don't have enough of in Burnsville, and I think it's appreciated. We were at Lebanon Hills this weekend for a walk, and their nature center has landscaping on the roof. And I'm stretching this, but is there any consideration to that type of a scenario when we're discussing this as far as landscape versus?
Yep. We do have, under the PUD section of the ordinance, there are a number of items that are listed that are considered to be benefits. And if you do a green roof, additional landscaping, additional building materials above and beyond the minimum, that's where you see in the staff reports where we will present the deviation asked for and then benefits of the proposal. So, a lot of times, if they can make improvements, at least in terms of a PUD, that's why you see these applications coming to you in that respect. If you want to come up with a standard, it's possible to do that, but on a site-by-site basis, I think you're better off with, you know, providing for, you know, X amount of credit, say as a percentage or something of that sort, rather than coming up with a specific, this equates to, you know, 10 millennial feet of landscaping or something of that sort. But yeah, you can certainly identify more detailed parameters than we currently have in the code.
Commissioner Workman, a lot of times in a PUD, it's all part of how it all rolls up and whether there was permeable block in the parking lot or landscaping on the roof and how that'll all kind of work up to the deviations on one side of the conversation and the pluses on the other.
I guess the reason why I ask is if that being considered as part of that 50% threshold, if it were to be?
In this case, unless I misunderstand, I know we've done some stuff where if they were to come to us with that, then in some cases, this would still be a deviation, but it would be, we would allow it.
We would consider that as part of the percentage.
Yeah. As is. Commissioner Singh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I tend to agree with Commissioner Workman, and I agree with your last statement. But I, my view on this is if we list in the ordinance that you give credit to patios and these extension of the building where you serve food and alcohol, some other developer or business might come up with something that is very unique and they're not included in the ordinance. I think our, from my experience here, the businesses who want patios as attachment to their buildings for services to their customers know that they can get credit for that when they apply. And as a deviation, the restricted amount of green space they can get. And we have been, we've been working with our businesses to help them to get the patios. So, I'm taking the position that I would like to stick with the 50%.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Levy.
Commissioner Benke mentions the inclusion of patios and the like, according to what you're suggesting, as part of the building. I think that's appropriate. It's a part of your service area for a portion of the year at least, and to me, that's a part of the building and should be considered as being, allowing its perimeter landscaping be a part of your overall landscaping without any question.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Commissioner Thomas.
I guess, I support the ordinance as written. I think the PUD process and the variance process opens the door to conversations with staff to address unique situations and present those to the decision-makers. And to try and eliminate unique situations by overstating the ordinance, I think is counterproductive. So, I would like to see it stay the way it is.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. I would, everyone else has spoken, so I would agree. The sheer number of applications that are in front of us, if I look at the list of applications that were here, there was not one of these applications that did not have some sort of other variance. And so, the landscaping variance was not the only thing that brought the application in front of us. There are a fair amount of complications and rules that city has in reference to outdoor patios. We've had, that's a complete application in itself from the standpoint of when it's open, how close it is to the other neighbors, when it's lit, what's the music. I mean, I think probably the longest one we had was, I think, Burger Jones, maybe Hurricanes, where it was close to a residential area. So, there's a fair amount of other things there. So, I would agree. I mean, I believe we needed to look at this, and I believe we have. I believe staff's done an excellent job of researching and bringing these things up. And I am not a fan of, specifically, I think Commissioner Thomas worded this better, and I can't seem to come up with it. I agree, I guess, with what he said, but I'm not looking to further define this. The process we have, I think, works very well. It's very fair, and so I would concur with Commissioner Singh and Commissioner Thomas. Anything else that you would like from us, Ms. Garros?
We're looking for a direction from the commission. Yes, to proceed.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would, I don't know if you need a motion.
You don't need a motion.
But I would suggest that the planning commission agrees, in fact, all of us have agreed, to keep the ordinance at a 50%, not to make any changes.
I agree.
All right. Tell me.
Okay.
Thank you much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Garros.
That's for real.
That brings us to the final item on our agenda this evening, which is updates. Commissioners, do you have any updates? Not everybody speak?
We did our plan event to the council.
Yeah. Commissioner Thomas, I'm sorry. No, okay.
I'm going back to the agenda.
Oh, okay.
I.
The comprehensive plan process update, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I missed that.
That's all right. That was one I was going to bring up.
And the updates.
Yes.
Ms. Garros, once again, you have the floor.
All right. Just for, because the planning commission is instrumental in the comprehensive plan update, we're just going to let you know that we have chosen kind of a consortium, if we will, of consultants that we are proposing to the city council that they allow us to use for the comp plan update. This year, we're looking at it much differently than Burnsville has in the past. We are looking at a group, basically so that we've got the same consultant responsible for all of the various sections as opposed to the past where we might have had one consultant do the engineering part, another consultant do the stormwater part, another consultant do the planning and land use part, and then we had to try to, you know, put all those things together in a meaningful product or plan for the city. So, this year, what we have chosen is this, like I say, kind of consortium or group to be led by Hoysington Kogler Group, Inc. They are a firm that specializes in doing comprehensive planning. They do it a lot here in the state, but they do it all over the country and are very proficient at what they do. Then SEH, which is Short Elliott Hendrickson, Inc., and they will be working on the elements of the plan really related to the stormwater, transportation, sewer utilities, those types of things. They are already, SEH is already in the consultant pool for our engineering department, and they are familiar, they've done our water resource planning for years. So, looking at that is very positive. The other group that is part of this is Simons and Oliver Resources, and they're a group that worked with us pretty extensively when we put our sustainability plan into effect, I believe, 2009. So, they will be helping us in terms of, you know, issues of sustainability and what can we do to improve or use some of those things to help, to market our city, to apply to land uses, perhaps, you know, some element of that in the future redevelopment of the Minnesota River Quadrant, those types of things. So, from a staff perspective, we had very good interviews with several firms, but we really are looking forward to this. We think too that a big component this time, as opposed to kind of the standard in the past, has been to hold these various big, you know, public meetings, and people come in and talk about goals and objectives and all sorts of things. We will still do that, but we're also going to have them focus on how we can use the media to get information out, either through Survey Monkey or other types of things, to try to go to the various groups in the city to get more of, I guess, balanced input and input from maybe some areas that have been underrepresented in the past. And we also look to work with the various school districts as well because they're facing, you know, a lot of changes. They're at the very forefront of things. So, hopefully, we'll be able to combine those. So, we're really excited about that. There will be on the, let's see, we're going to do a comp plan update to the city council on their April 12th work session meeting. So, you're certainly all, you know, if you have, if you're available or want to just, you know, look in at that meeting, that's where we'll give kind of the outline of who these groups are, a little bit more detail, and talk to the council about, you know, the overall process, who should be on an advisory-type panel, those types of things. So, hopefully shortly after that, we'll get started with the comp plan. So, pretty excited about it. Wanted to give you an update on that. And for the other updates, I do have a couple, but I can wait.
No. Thank you, Ms. Garros. That's a pretty exciting time for us, and it's a massive undertaking with the update for the Met Council. So, thank you. I'm sorry I missed, there's nothing under tab six, so that's why I missed that. So, Commissioners, back to tab number seven, updates. Does anybody have any updates? None from the Commissioners. We'll move back to staff.
Well, we do have our upcoming agenda. There are a couple of items that will be on your next planning commission agenda, and one of them is an application for planning and development. This is a project down on Frontier Court. It is north of Al Magnet Lake in that neighborhood. It's just on McAndrews and Frontier Court, near McAndrews and County Road 11, kind of that business section to the north of McAndrews. There are three office buildings there. The PUD that was approved for them was for office. And we have an application coming up for a community center and school to be in one of the buildings. And then following that, a meeting or two later, we've got another application for the same development, different building, but to look at daycare, large daycare, where they would take the entire building for that. We are having a neighborhood meeting on the community center and school this week. It's Thursday night, unfortunately, for those of you who like to celebrate, celebrate with Shamrock shakes and other things. But we do have the neighborhood meeting coming up this week. It's on the 17th at 6:00 p.m. It'll be here in the council chambers. And the property they're looking at is 13770 Frontier Court. With that?
Thank you, Ms. Garros. I think you're all familiar, we recently approved an application for a business there to manufacture products in that area.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
So, a question on that. I see the car wash is closed. Is that effective with this?
I don't, I don't know. We have advised them because a community center has a large parking demand, and part of the reason for that PUD was because there is not a whole lot of parking in that neighborhood. I mean, I think all of you know, if you try to shop down there with Valley Natural Foods and whatnot, there is kind of a shortage there. We have told the applicant that it would be helpful if they could find another, another area where they could do some joint parking or have a joint parking arrangements. So, we'll see if they're able to do that or not.
This is not the Celadon Building, but the one that's near it?
This is not the Celadon Building. This would be just west. It's on the other corner. So, Celadon is on the east, the northeast corner.
Across the street.
And this would be on the northwest.
Frontier takes you back to the maintenance building.
So, it's on the west side of?
West side.
It's just south of that huge electrical, yep.
There's no building there now.
Yes, there are.
Yeah, there are three different office, little office buildings that are there now.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Ms. Garros.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I would stand for a motion for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
Moved by Commissioner Thomas.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone watching this evening, and have a safe drive home.